Three, two, one.
Welcome to the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Vinithe Hamavati. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar, as posted on the agenda and Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to meet your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Okay, great. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now do select board announcements. The annual Town Meeting is May thirteenth. Warrants will be distributed to households on April twenty-fourth. The annual Town Election is June third. Nomination papers are available in the Town Clerk's Office, and completed nomination papers must be returned by April fifteenth. For a complete list of positions on the ballot, visit longmeadowma.gov. The Long Meadow Community Earth Day Cleanup is looking for volunteers for this year's community cleanup on April fifth from ten AM to two PM. Volunteers are still needed. If you are interested, please visit longmeadowma.gov/one-two-four-one-earth-day. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April second regarding the nine sixteen Williams Street Site and Design Review Application. You may send correspondence to the Planning Board by emailing planningdepartment@longmeadowma.gov or by sending post mail to the Planning Board at two thirty-one Maple Road. All materials are on the Active Case File site on the Town website under the folder marked twenty twenty-five zero two oh five dash one dash nine sixteen Williams Street. Okay. And that's it for announcements. We will now move into resident comments. Anyone here to make a resident comment? You can come up to the microphone, name, address, and you get three minutes.
Thank you. Scott Foster, fifteen eighty-seven Long Meadow Street. I'm with the Select Board. I first want to thank you for your service. Very few individuals in our town of high-achieving personalities are willing to sacrifice time, their spouses and children, and commit to serving the town through civic engagement like you. I'm sure your children look up to each of you and that you surely must realize the example you're setting for others. I leapt up to my own father as he selflessly served in the same position as you for multiple terms, serving as chair more than once. I noticed his care and attention, looking out for the town's long-term interests, often advocating for programs and improvements that would still be benefiting the town long after he is gone. He was willing to hear different perspectives, and he came prepared to discuss issues in detail. He was and still is a proud veteran, I believe the last one to serve in the Select Board. When in twenty twenty-three he was asked to step into a vacant seat on the Board of Assessors, my father again answered the call. As you know, each member of the Board of Assessors is required to take and pass an online exam offered by the Commonwealth. My father was willing to devote the time necessary to become a qualified board member, and he took the appointment very seriously. His dedication and devotion was noted by the long-term Chair of the Board, Michael Zeller, who served on the Board for Assessors for fifteen years and who has since resigned in protest. For reasons that continue to baffle me, a member of the Board has seen fit to repeatedly defame my father in public and on camera, claiming he made a town employee's job, quote, "more difficult" and caused a, quote, "undue burden on town resources." Apparently insisting a town employee complied with Massachusetts law makes a job more difficult. And correcting correspondence erroneously sent out by a town employee to town residents poses an undue burden on town resources. Perhaps the Select Board should give the benefit of the doubt to long-term resident and public servant instead of giving credence to vague allegations made by a short-term non-resident employee. Rather than launching unfounded ad hominem attacks, perhaps the Select Board should ask, why did a town employee hire the only remaining incumbent member of the Board of Assessors, essentially her supervisor, as her mortgage loan originator in September twenty twenty-four? Perhaps the Select Board should wonder why a town employee that engages in behavior that seems to be a clear violation of the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law is so eager to throw off the yoke of responsible oversight and instead curry favor with illicit transactions. Each of you speak from a power of authority. As an elected official in our town, at least three of you are licensed professionals. Surely, you recognize the need to take personal responsibility for your public comments rather than offering the weakest of fake apologies to those who may have been hurt by a poor choice of words. Our town deserves to be represented by elected officials that rise above petty, personal politics and demonstrate maturity, professionalism, and thoughtfulness. To all of you, I have a simple demand: Do better.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Yep, you can come on up.
Don't worry, it's something different. Tom Shea, eighty-one Green Meadow. As you know, I was the one that came up with the idea to use interest on stabilization funds for capital expenditures that will make over four hundred thousand dollars of extra money available annually. This presented the Finance Committee in December. This afternoon, you received a draft policy from me that the Town was previously provided but did not adopt. I advise you to review and adopt what I gave you, other things that corrects the improper term from twenty eighteen and adopts the use of interest on stabilization as the third permitted use rather than a separate, unconnected paragraph. Onto the budget. As you have heard in joint sessions with the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee, all expressed frustration with the town's infrastructure and DPW performance. One participant said the DPW is in shambles. Major recurring mold issues at Wolf Swamp and Center School, most recently again at Center School, are absolutely unacceptable and public health issues. How to fix it? The DPW budget is increasing by four hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven point six percent. Were we not doing HVAC maintenance previously, a hundred and fifty thousand? And are we planning for mold, or is there mold now that you need fifty thousand dollars to remediate? People need to know if there's mold now. A detailed implementation plan on the turnaround of the DPW needs to be presented to the Select Board in April, including who is accountable, hiring process, timeline to fully implement, and measurement of progress. Monthly at a Select Board meeting, a project report on the turnaround needs to be presented by the head of the DPW, HR Director, and Town Manager to report progress. Over two years ago, two Select Board members requested this type of monthly meeting. It has never happened, two of you. Citizens need to see a plan in progress. It's their money and infrastructure. Get this monthly meeting on the Select Board agenda for April. Otherwise, we'll be talking about it at the Town Meeting in May. Monthly DPW report to Town Manager and Select Board needs to show hiring and vacancy percentages. Need to show a heat map of open work orders by criticality and aging. I'm going to run out of time, but let's get on to the capital plan. Why not bond for the Center School chiller and the Blueberry one, nine hundred thousand for next year totaling one point six million as part of the other bonding? It's Finance one-on-one to finance over the life of the assets, which are twenty years old. The use of the annual capital budget for two hundred and sixteen thousand, which you propose, is actually against your capital policy. Additional capital, we always look for more capital. Defer the OPEB and fire truck, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Pick a project and then use free cash of a million, which is after the snow funding, in November. I'm out of time, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here for a comment? Do we have anyone online?
No.
No, okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a presentation about our water and sewer rate evaluation that is going to be delayed until next week, or our next meeting, sorry. So we will now go into Select Board comments. If anyone has a comment? Mark?
I have a couple. I attended a couple of agency meetings on behalf of the Select Board. Just wanted to comment that the PVTA, which is the Bus Transportation Program for the Pioneer Valley, continues to show increased ridership, and I want to remind everybody that ridership in PVTA buses is free, and it's important for people to know that. That's part of the reason the ridership is up. But unfortunately, ridership in what's called paratransit or dial-a-ride is not free, and we do have extensive use of that in the town of Long Meadow. I think it's wonderful. We have two systems actually in Long Meadow, something called the Tri-Town Trolley, which is Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, and I think Hampton, and that runs at a pretty low rate. But after hours, they do use dial-a-ride, and because the usage is way up, which is actually excellent in the town, I think you'll see in the budget that our assessment from PVTA is up a little bit. I took some time and spent some time with them to find out the assessment process and split. It's ridiculously complicated, but nevertheless, it's worth listening to if somebody is interested in how we got our allocation. It's ultimately fair, but it's necessary. So the PVTA is out there. The other is that I attended the Building Committee, who, as a result of the permit Building Committee meeting, they decided to write a letter to the Select Board expressing their concerns about the capital plan, and that letter was in our packet today. And so I would point that out to everybody who may be looking at the packet. It was a reflection of a sense of discussion, I guess, at the meeting they had late last week. And finally, the Recycling Committee is continuing to meet, and they're getting close. They want to thank people who participated in the survey on trash bins. I think that people are finding out that a ninety-five gallon trash bin, which they call a container, is humongous, and so they may be adjusting that a little bit. But it was very, very valuable information, and I know they're working on it diligently to get those onward.
Thank you. Andrew?
Follow along with what Mark said. I also attended a recent Recycling Committee meeting, and I was really blown away by how hard these people on the committee are working to try to find the best solution for the Town. The survey did show that most were in favor of the largest for paper and cardboard, and certainly I'm sure we all know people who are strongly in favor of that. But some people have also visited them in person, which I encourage everyone to do at the DPW, like the vestibule at the entrance, to go check them out, because the committee is still avidly seeking feedback, which you can share by emailing any member of the committee, which you can find on the Town Website, their individuals' names and emails, and also you can message them on Facebook. Also, Dan and I went to a recent school budget summit, I think they called it, which was really interesting, and Lynn helped organize that. And it was basically representatives from like twelve towns in the area, all with the same concerns about the difficulty, basically, providing level services in our school districts. And we talked about the problem and how to best advise and solicit help from our legislators, specific challenges like special ed and behavioral health services, and what to do about uncertainty regarding federal grants and things like that. So I thought it was very productive, and the group composed a letter, basically, that will help advocate for ourselves, essentially, with our legislators and hopefully make some difference.
Great, thank you. Dan?
Yeah, the one thing to, thank you for bringing that up, Andrew. I think the one thing that I found important was really the uncertainty, especially at the federal level with the current administration, what we're talking about, potentially the impact, what it would mean to Long Meadow with like nine hundred thousand dollars potentially in cuts and what that might mean to Long Meadow. And I think residents should know that, you know, Superintendent O'Shea and Finance Director Tom Maza are following this on a regular basis. So I'd like to say that we're in good hands in terms of being proactive and kind of seeing what's going on at the federal level, even though there is certainly a lot of uncertainty. We're definitely keeping an eye on how we can best handle potential cuts, so something to keep an eye on. But I did want to mention that. I thought it was also a good event to attend.
Great, thank you. Josh?
Just wanted to comment first on the recycling bins. Humongous is the right word. I picked up my dump sticker. I could not believe what it was. It will not fit in anyone's shed. It won't fit anywhere. It's absolutely massive. So I wish more people had gotten to look at it before they did the survey. I think it might have changed some minds. I just wanted to mention a monthly update on the Middle School Building Committee. At our last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion on HVAC and power and the energy exchange using groundwater. If anyone watched it, unless they were an engineer, it was, probably was very confused. It was all Greek to me, but I think it, clearly, we have some good consultants who know what they're doing, and they're, we're opting for a good design, I think, or honing in on it that will use ultimately a lot fewer ground wells than was initially anticipated, so that will save some money, so that's good. And overall, it'll be very efficient. There's room for solar panels down the road, so there's a lot of, it's going to be a pretty green building if it all goes through. And also, we had a brief discussion, and you can see how things evolve as we talk. Two meetings ago, we looked at outside designs, and there were some cool, modern-looking things, but our questions were mostly focused on how do we keep this, keep the maintenance pretty easy and cheap for the long term, because DPW is stretched as it is, and even though we'll have one building, we may have another big field at Glenbrook. So the design came back with a lot of materials that would take no maintenance. They'll put in plants. They'll be naturally low-growing, or they're native plants. So, you know, there, you can see the consultants and our design team working with us and evolving the design as we go. And again, I encourage people to watch the meeting, watch the meetings every month and participate, send in ideas. We certainly listen, and I hope we hear, I would like to hear from people more before we're leading up to the vote. Now's the time to really participate and frame, nudge things how you want along. Thank you.
Great, all right. Thank you, everyone. Lynn, Town Manager's Report.
So as I mentioned at my last report in the beginning of March, the natural grass versus artificial turf study has been completed. The public presentation is scheduled for Thursday, April third, at six thirty PM at the Adult Center. A link to the full study is available in my Town Manager Report, and it's also on the homepage of the Town Website. The Town's Municipal Aggregation Plan has been approved by DPU. Good Energy, the Town's Municipal Aggregation Contractor, is going to solicit requests for proposals from energy suppliers in late April twenty twenty-five. Negotiations will then take place with the expectation for the new plan to go live in August of twenty twenty-five. Leading up to the go-live date, there will be a substantial amount of education for the community. And linked here in my report is a recent release from Division of Local Services, who was sharing Parax January first twenty twenty-five list of retirement boards by funded ratio. This is a statewide list that was prepared. The chart that I have linked in my report shows the top five funded retirement systems and the bottom five least funded retirement systems. And sadly, the Hampton County Regional Retirement System, of which we're a part of, ranks number five in the lowest percentages at fifty-four point seven percent funded. We're joined in that category by the City of Springfield, Fall River, Worcester Regional, and New Bedford. And so you can review that entire report. It's linked in my study, or I'm sorry, the study is linked in my report. That's all I have tonight.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I'd just like to add to what Lynn said about the Hampton County Retirement Board, that it's the five lowest, they analyzed ninety-nine different pension plans throughout the state. Also in that report, and why I think it's worth looking at, is the projected date at which it will meet, they will meet their funding requirement, and Hampton County has been pushed out yet again. And so I think it's worth people seeing the projected date that it is. In essence, and I apologize for the vernacular, it's a shambles, the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. Not to mention the fact that they are six months, eight months, nine months behind on issuing us an audit of their actuarial numbers, which is required for us to complete our annual audit. That's why we have not yet done our fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget audit, because we're waiting on Hampton County, and we continue to wait on them and continue to wait, and it's not us, it's us and thirty-five other organizations. You know, it's just a mess, and, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do, apparently. But from my mind, we've got to find something, because there are five of ninety-nine programs that are the fifth lowest funded. They're continuing to extend out when they'll be funded. They can't even do simple audits of their system, and they don't do the audit internally. They hire an outside company. I think it's, I forgot the name of the company that does it, and they can't even put it together. So it's just a mess, and I appreciate, Lynn, that you continue to bring this, keep this on the forefront of everybody's attention.
Anyone else? Thank you, Lynn. And next, we'll move into old business, and we don't have any meeting minutes approved tonight, so that we will...
You will soon.
And then we can move into our discussion about the Operating Stabilization Fund Policy Update. The policy that reflected our discussion from last meeting is attached to the agenda. Hopefully, we can get a vote on this tonight, but any comments, questions about this before we maybe vote on this? Josh?
I guess the only issue I would see is, are we comfortable with not having language in there, what happens when we do get above ten percent? And I don't, I think it's moot, based on our discussion last time, for the most part, because we can stop moving money in, and the interest has to go really wild up for it to really be an issue. So if we're comfortable with it, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to bring it up again, since we didn't address that.
Yeah, I think what we ended up saying at the last meeting was that that would be just a separate discussion that we have, and Ian and maybe the Finance Committee, we're going to look into how to, yeah, maybe some ideas for how to handle that.
I also, I mean, I think that that was, that's a very interesting discussion to have. I think we were having so much trouble just getting through the basic matter at hand that we basically said, let's just talk about that another time.
We're not able to fund your largest budget expense, which is generally your schools. So we are very fortunate that Skantik Valley offered the four percent increase, because we are not having to go after departments to help make up a difference in that. With this budget, we're also able to put more funding at OPEB than we originally thought we would, but I will call out that it does not meet your policy. But it is an effort more than we were able to do last year until we made it up at the Fall Town Meeting. But so this is at least a better reflection of what we've been able to do than what we've been able to do in the last couple budgets. And one of the big budget drivers you'll see in the public safety increase was the fact that both police and fire now are absorbing a hundred percent of the regional dispatch cost assessment. So the grant was a five-year grant. It trickled down from the first three years being a hundred percent supported by the state to fifty percent, then to twenty-five. This is the first year we're at a hundred percent on the Town's footing the assessment. And so we split that between police and fire budgets. So that's a pretty substantial increase for those budgets. That's why you'll see that number look as high as it does. So the one that I feel most positive about here is that we have been able to make a pretty significant investment in the DPW for the twenty-six budget. You had been presented with various reports over the last two fiscal years, one of them more recently regarding trees, and you'll see that we have almost twenty-four percent increase in the tree budget. We're able to add money to take care of some of the trees that need to be removed and/or just cleaned up, and then we're also making a significant investment in tree planting to replace some of the shade canopy that we've lost over the years. We're also able to add for turf management. So this is actually going to build on top of what we were able to add last year. So we're incrementally making improvements to that line item to actually try to reflect what it really is going to take to maintain our fields to the standard that we expect them to be at. Same with athletic fields. So that's a pretty significant increase in grounds. Building maintenance enhancements, while we have been able to make some significant improvements there, I will say that it is just a drop in the bucket. Our buildings need a lot of work, and so we're starting here with funding HVAC services through a contract. We have been unsuccessful in hiring an HVAC person for almost two years now, and we are going to contract this out. And if we are able to eventually hire someone, then we can scale back on that contract, but we do need the funding there in order to make sure this work is getting done. And then remediation of organic growth is a new add this year. Over, I'd say, at least three to five fiscal years, we have had pop-up situations of organic growth in buildings, not just school buildings, but town buildings as well. It is turning into a situation that we just need to be responsibly prepared for. Between the changing climate and some issues with HVAC systems off and on, this is just a normal business practice now that we need to get ready for responding to. And so this is an effort to have funds available to respond as needed. Some new requests in DPW are fence repair and playground maintenance. So these are ones that arguably should have been in the budget forever. They just should be standard items in a DPW budget. They have not been, and so we're actually able to do that this year. We have fences all around town that there was no funding mechanism to make repairs or replacement to. This will start to address that. And then playground maintenance, again, when you invest in assets like we have, you have to maintain them, and we did not have a line item to do that maintenance called out, so we are making an effort to do that here.
Lynn, are those two for materials, or is that for contracts?
It could be either, but here it's going to be for materials. We don't have contracts in place for either of these.
So that would be DPW staff that would make those repairs?
Hopefully, if it was something larger or more specialized, we may contract it out. It may be more cost advantageous to do that. And then new staff positions. So we have positions added in the areas of operation foreman, maintenance custodians, a couple more laborers, and a clerk for the DPW to handle the workload that's coming in. We've noticed that that's been an issue over the years with not only responding to calls, but also inputting work orders into the system and then tracking them, and then just providing just basic administrative support to the divisions there. So some of the challenges we had, as I already spoke about, state aid came in lower than we had originally projected. Another issue is that the school committee request came in at three point two percent in this budget. I am only proposing to fund it at three percent, which is an eighty-one thousand dollar difference. I do want to point out, though, that the school committee request, whether it's the three point two percent or a three percent, is a reasonable request. The school committee is grappling with a lot of challenges in rising costs that they do not have control over. I spent the entire day today at a Joint Ways and Means Committee public hearing that was all about education funding and local aid, and we are very fortunate that we are not facing a lot of the challenges that many other communities around us are facing. Between the health insurance number and the fact that we do not pay for busing to the extent that many of these other schools do, we fare much better. And so I do want to point out that although I'm not able to fund their budget at the three point two percent, even that request is not out of the realm. And so I really thank the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for the work that they've done to maintain the school budget in the parameters that they have, and I do think that this is something that we're going to need to keep close watch on. And I do think that this is something that we're going to need to keep close watch on and be strong advocates for at the state level because we do need a fundamental change in education funding because it's going to rely more and more on cities and towns unless we do have that change. Enough on that topic. And just pointing out that while I am making a significant recommendation to improve DPW funding, it is not the full extent of what DPW does need. In order to get us there, I think we're going to have to chip away year over year, but this is a big step in the right direction. One of the other challenges, and you'll see this in our other conversation that we'll have, relates to aging infrastructure. And so I know you all know this, but the ARPA funds have heavily subsidized the stormwater utility. And those funds have gone away, but the work needed to maintain our and improve our stormwater infrastructure has not gone away. And so you'll see in the budget, we're recommending, one of the larger repair projects for Raspberry Brook is going to be funded with a hybrid approach of the operating budget and capital. And so we'll get into that in a little bit. One number that continues to climb, and it's not keeping pace with what we're able to fund in the budget, is vehicle maintenance and vehicle replacement costs. So this is the second year in a row that the fire department has exhausted all of their vehicle replacement funds mid-year. And have had to go to the Finance Reserve Fund to make that request. We're incrementally increasing the vehicle maintenance line in fire and police, but it's likely not going to be enough, but we're going to continue to monitor that. And then also, we have been replacing police cruisers through the operating budget. That's been the standard practice instead of capital. The cost for cruiser replacement has just gone up and up and up over the last few fiscal years. What used to, what we used to be able to buy for $50,000 is now a standard $70,000. And so it's really hard to absorb that in a relatively small public safety budget. But we do have that in this, this budget here. And then obviously, what we've all deal with all the time is that we have limited revenue sources to continue to fund our operating costs. So that's something we're always going to continue to monitor. And so what we're looking at for the future, obviously, we're going to monitor the state budget just to see if there's increases or decreases to unrestricted government aid, any changes to Chapter 70. One thing that's not related to the state budget is the net metering agreements. I know we've talked about this over the last year. We're very close to finalizing the last bit of change with our last net metering agreement. Once we do that, I should have a much better picture on how I can redistribute those credits that are currently sitting on our streetlight account. That should have some financial savings for the utility lines in various budgets. We're also closely monitoring any changes to programs or grants with, that we're receiving federal funding. So this is not just the schools, although that's a big number. The Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, that's upgrading Bliss Park Playground, that is a federal grant. So we're, at this point, still have the funding available to us, but it's unclear if that's going to stay. So we're monitoring that. And then certainly economic uncertainty, that we're really not sure what this next year is going to pan out for. So as we generally do, I provide just our overall fund reserves for the last 10 or so fiscal years. You can see we've had significant growth. Just our fund balances as of right now, as of, I'm sorry, as of January 31st. That free cash number, you'll want to keep an eye on because you'll get your first draft of the warrant in the next conversation. And that's where we're pulling some of those warrant article funding items from. That brings us to the end. Finance Committee will hold a public hearing and then you will vote on your budget, which will then become your budget on April 7th for inclusion in the warrant for the annual town meeting. And this PowerPoint, along with the Town Manager Budget Message, the Line Item Budget, and the sources and uses have all been uploaded to the Town Manager website.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Any questions, comments from the board?
I guess I have a lot of questions, not just about line items, but in general. One of the things that I guess people do in their home budgets is when things get very, very expensive, they relook at capital purchases. And I'm speaking specifically here about the police vehicles because they are an operating budget line item, not a capital budget line item. And you know, people who may drive by through and around the police department notice that there's a lot of vehicles there. And so I guess the question is, you know, we, we hit, when, when we had the money, we were on a pretty good cycle of two vehicles, two vehicles, three vehicles, two vehicles, two vehicles, three vehicles. And the question is, at what point is it time to rethink that and squeeze another year out of our vehicles, recognizing there is a cost in maintenance to do that, but you know, vehicles are very, very expensive. The other part of that, I think, is the, you know, the maintenance cost of our vehicles that you highlighted. One of the justifications, or one of the ideals we thought of with the new DPW facility was we would have a full-time mechanic and take care of all of our own maintenance on the vehicles. And invariably, there's police vehicles certainly, and other town vehicles down at the local garage down here getting routine maintenance done. And I think that, you know, when times are financially difficult, somehow we got to figure out a way to get back to the process of taking care of our own vehicles and even stretching out the time between them.
I thought you said you had a lot of comments here.
I'll do one at a time.
I just, just looking at, I appreciate this Lynn, by the way. I know you put a lot of work into it. So I was just curious, with the shift over the town hall over to Greenwood, is it too early to start kind of seeing what kind of savings that we have? Just overall, whether it's, you know, like copying machines and, and things like that. I'm just curious if we're seeing some of those savings already with, with the move?
Yeah, great question. It's a little soon, but we are seeing not only savings, but efficiencies. We did make a drastic change to how departments print and copy records, or anything for that matter. And we're still working out some of the kinks with that. It's a system called PaperCut and it literally tracks every single person's quantity of photocopies or printing. And then we get monthly reports for that. And so Ian and I are diving into that with the new IT director to figure out the best way to track that and assess it to departments. But there, there is going to be a cost savings from that. One of the things that threw some of that off this time is we did it mid-year. And also, the town clerk was, was taking a step at looking at a different way to print the census this past year and actually brought that in-house, thinking it would be a cost savings. And so that skewed our paper numbers from what we've normally done. And so we're analyzing whether that really was a cost savings or not to outsources, outsource first, bring it in-house. So I can have more information on that probably as we close out this fiscal year, but it's definitely something we're tracking. And if it's not going the way I want or envision it going, then we'll figure out why. Because there, on the face of it, there should absolutely be a cost savings. There's less equipment than we had before.
Just with like the energy cost though, too, I'm just thinking, having everyone in that, in the building there, are we seeing a difference just with the high cost of energy and having to heat these buildings?
There hasn't been a tremendous energy cost change. The, we were heating the building anyway. And actually, that facility gets a lot warmer than we were used to. So most staff are keeping thermostat pretty low. But I can run all of that and have a better idea once we get a little more time under us and have summer numbers to calculate in.
And then just a couple other ones that I took notes on. I was really happy to see the athletic fields because that's something that I know personally, I hear a lot. Our fields are in bad shape. Obviously, Wolf Swamp Field's excellent, but there's other fields that need a lot of help. So I'm glad to see that, that we've increased those items as well as, you know, ongoing maintenance for, for our playgrounds too. That was a, in my opinion, never really should have been a contentious issue in the past with the, you know, some members of the finance committee. But I'm glad that we funded that and we're going to move forward continuing to fund that. So, thank you.
Josh?
I have some line item questions. I'll start on the first page. You had a town council, the request was 64,000 and it was actually 48,000. I understand that, that is an increase on the monthly retainer. Why was there $64,000 requests in the first place?
When we did the original budget projection, there was discussion about them, our town council needing to increase their rates. The workload was more substantial with us than they had originally anticipated. And so the retainer was going to go up. Luckily, the retainer didn't go up as much as we had projected in December.
And there's a couple lines down on the increase to fully fund the legal budget. I know we've recently had a few legal matters come off our plate. Why the large increase? And are we backfilling or is this for Eversource, I guess?
No, we're not backfilling, but we have had to replenish the legal fund every single year, actually since I've been here. Some of that was due to DPW, some of that was due to the DPU matter. But what was happening was other things were popping up and we were pulling from the legal budget, maybe funds that were earmarked for DPW or for the DPU case, cable, and then some lawsuits that came in. And so this is an effort to more adequately project what we think it's going to cost based on just the trends that have been happening. My goal is that we do not have to use any free cash to supplement the legal budget.
Okay. And in theory, knock on wood, it could be less, far less than that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you Lynn for putting this together. I thank you also for sitting with me earlier this week, literally letting me torture you going line by line. I really thought, it was clear that you put a ton of thought into literally every line of the budget. I think that, you know, I was certainly satisfied myself that this, I think this does a good job of meeting like our most important priorities. Obviously, it's a difficult situation. There's a limited amount of funds. I was very glad that the DPW, as you know, is being supported. We're sacrificing things, like you mentioned, the OPEB. I'm certainly hopeful that in the fall that that could be, you know, supplemented as well. So thank you. And back to you, Mark.
Great. If you don't mind Lynn, just go through some line items and I guess that concerned me many of the questions you did answer. But you know, like the DPW clerical, I assume that's the clerk that's being added and things like that. But there's one thing, traffic control, pretty, up pretty substantially, $15,000 on a $25,000 budget. What's that, what's that due to?
Can you just tell me your line, just so I can get to it quicker?
My line item is 346, something like that, yeah. 348. It's in the, it's in the spreadsheet.
Yep, I got it here. 346 on mine. Yes, so this is the, the, literally our traffic control devices are intersections. This is more, this is accurately reflecting the contract that we have for some of that signal maintenance and also repairs that have been needed. The costs of those repairs have actually been staggering. And some of the spots in town you may or may not know do not work. Specifically, the Bliss and Long Meadow Street intersection, that's one we've talked about quite a bit in terms of our Traffic and Roads Advisory Group. And DPW needs more money to maintain what we currently have.
Thank you. In the DPW, you've shown increases in line 408 in utilities. And after your comment about the, again, unknown, but the settlement on, on our distribution of net metering, wouldn't it be more likely that our utilities are going to stay level as it, as it, the town, given all the credits that we can put in?
This remains to be seen. So the, the cost right now is going up. Based on what the departments submit to me, what they know right now is the cost goes up. They're not privy to the entire conversation on the net metering agreement changes or the, how the credits are going to be distributed. So when they submit a budget, it's based on what they know. It's possible that the, this line 408, the utilities in the grounds maintenance department will be the beneficiary of a lot of those rewards. I don't know yet. But they are not the heavy utility user. And so I think moving forward, I would be targeting those reward, not reward, those, those credits toward our higher energy users.
Maybe you can just explain for the people at home, I think I understand how, where the credits are and how they're going to potentially benefit somebody in this town.
Yeah, so this is, this is a multi-layered project here. So we have net metering agreements. We are buying solar energy credits and they were being applied to the streetlight account. The streetlight account previously was a pretty high use, energy user. When we had the high-pressure sodium lights, we swapped to LED lights. And so our energy use went down significantly. The, we were still purchasing the same amount of solar credits and they were being applied to the streetlight account and not being able to be used because we were not consuming enough power in order to apply those credits to. And so we've, credits have amassed on that account. And in the meantime, we've been working on modifying our net metering agreements to cash out the, one of the agreements that we have. And so we will no longer have credits being applied to the account. It will literally be in the form of a, a check that's sent to the town. Not going to get into the, all the nitty-gritty we're still working on in terms of dispersment of that check. But what will then happen, once that agreement has been modified, we will then go to Eversource, who lets you one time redistribute credits out from one account to as many other accounts as you want. And so we will take that opportunity, that one-time opportunity, to figure out what our credit balance is at that point in time and then distribute it out to the various utility accounts, both town and school side. And then we're going to, myself, Ian, Lisa at the DPW, and our new energy manager are going to sit down and figure out what makes the most sense in terms of distributing those credits.
Thank you. You show a fairly substantial increase, actually a doubling in the, in the DPW, which is really the recycling overtime, solid waste recycling overtime, line 512. I assume that's for work down at the recycling center, although it doesn't say that. And I'm just wondering why that increasing, increasing so much?
Yes. So the overtime at the recycling center, we, this is a couple different things. But the primary driver is that we have had significant staff turnover down there. And when we have staff turnover of recycling attendants, we have to force overtime for our general laborers or others in the DPW division. And so that's why you see that, that going up. The last year, this FY '25 budget, they did not have enough funding in overtime to cover the cost. So this is to more accurately reflect what it takes to actually run that facility.
Is there a commensurate increase in our recycle, sales of recycling stickers to, to cover this? I mean,
No.
I guess the next question, should there be? You know, should, should we have, should we be covering, you know, and it's kind of rhetorical question, but, but one would think that that would happen anyway. So, and the other, you know, just a quick comment about, about OPEB. My concern about underfunding OPEB is that we don't find ourselves in the same situation that the Hampton County Retirement Board is with funding the retiree pension plan. That we're on a path to fund that. And I think we need to stick on that fund. And I appreciate that it's something easy to cut because it's not immediately available. But as I said at the last meeting, there's 8.3 million or something like that. but as I said at the last meeting, there's 8.3 million or something like that in the OPEB fund that could spin off some substantial amount of money and it'd be a shame not to fund OPEB because, you know, it's the, we save a few dollars now and it costs us a few plus dollars down the, down the road. So, I think it's, it's a, it's a concern I think we should all have. The last thing, Lynn, is I, you know, I, I'm very conscious of, of staff additions here that seem to be, make a lot of sense, but I guess my, I'd like to know how we're making sure we don't add to the hole that we're digging for OPEB and retirees for staff and new staff. In other words, are we fully funding their full cost or are we just funding their salary and immediate benefits? Because a person hired today may cost us a substantial amount of money down in the retirement plan and it'd be ideal if we said, you know, somebody we're hiring today and we're paying X dollars per hour, we have to put aside Y dollars into an OPEB fund specifically for them. Otherwise, we just are falling behind every time we hire somebody.
So, to answer that one, no, we're not putting aside funding for where, when we make a new hire toward their OPEB, other than what we're doing in our OPEB contribution.
Anything else?
Just real quick, in terms of the local receipts, it was around 172K. Are there areas that jump out just compared to other years? And just wondering, I like to see when our receipts are up, of course. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, let me get to that.
Like what's driving that, you know?
Yeah. So, we, some of the good things is that our meals tax generally stays pretty stable. So, that's even when the market takes a dive or even during the pandemic, we did not see a significant reduction in meals tax like many other communities saw with, you know, large downtowns that relied on that revenue source. So, that's been a, generally a good thing. So, I feel pretty comfortable with their, where that number stays. The ambulance receipts, that number is, has been growing year over year over year and that's one we, Ian and I and Chief Rigney carefully watch. As much as we want to up that number, that ends up having an effect on the backside, which is any revenue in excess of what we've projected here goes into the ambulance fund. So, we don't want to up that projection too much and then short ourselves on the ambulance fund. So, we watch that carefully. And then one of the ones that Ian and I had some kind of almost last-minute conversations about were motor vehicle excise. That's one that we have been conservative in our estimates on and is an area where we could up it, but we felt like we, we were not comfortable upping it more than we did this year because of so much uncertainty in the market right now and whether or not it's going to yield people cooling off from buying cars or if, if there's going to be delay in actually having supply for new cars. So, we, we didn't feel comfortable messing with that number too much yet. Once we have this kind of year and this new administration under us, maybe next year is a year we could look at. I think things might hopefully shake out and stabilize, potentially. Who knows? But that's, that's one we've been, we kind of had some last-minute discussions about. And then one I just, I want to point out, because Ian and I have also discussed this one in great detail, actually, and this is the MGM money. So, this is not money, not revenue that we can count on forever. And so Ian and I have talked about phasing it out of our budget at some point, like slowly. So, it's not one big hit when the surrounding community payment goes away, but we have not been able to do that yet. We've, we tried to do it last year and we weren't able to. And then this year with going into the budget with a $700,000 gap and then the gap growing, we just, we weren't able to, to start whittling down our reliance on that money. But it is something to consider, that eventually that 320-plus thousand dollars will not be there for us and that will be a big gap.
Okay. Anything else? Josh?
You covered a lot of my line item questions. One, just a small thing, but my line 102 is postage. It's $43,000, which is something like 60,000 letters. Is, are we required, I might have asked this last year, are we required to send the tax bill by mail every year? And are, is that mostly covering required statutory requirements for mailings?
I don't have the actual granular detail on that. I don't know if you do, Ian, but in terms of whether we're required to mail tax bills, I believe we are unless you opt into receiving an electronic version. This definitely is an area that I would love to see us make significant progress in. It kind of goes hand in hand with the push that I've been putting on departments to digitize and electronic means for doing business. I just, not only do the paper savings come, but then the mailing savings come as well.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking with, like the town clerk having the new online permitting software. The more we can do that, the more it can be email. It's incremental, but our budget is, it's tight. So, the little things we can do, I think are really, can be advantageous. And then, then line 420 was contracted landscaping, which you cut in half.
Yes.
Can you explain why?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So, over the last couple fiscal years, we had, I think it was like $100,000. I didn't pull the line up, but, and that was to maintain the adult center and the high school. The high school had a significant backlog in landscaping work that needed to be done. And so the quotes that had come in to do that work reflected the $100,000 need. Working with the landscapers, we've gotten to a baseline that they can very easily maintain now, and so we were able to reduce that contract amount. And this is the, the amount that's built into the budget reflects them being able to more efficiently maintain what's here.
Okay, thanks. And I can't remember if you've covered a, so we've increased forestry, we've increased the planting fee or money available for planting. Do you have an approximate on how many trees we anticipate putting in?
With that amount, I don't, but I, I know that the current budget had $8,000 in it and now we're going to have 32 for tree planting. So, I can get that number for you, but it's a lot more than what we've been doing.
And does that include all like the, the bags that we all got and the?
Gator bags?
Yeah, the gator bags and the, the mulching and is that all included in that?
When, in the tree planting line, yeah. Yep.
Just one last comment because Josh made a really good point on the postage piece. Just kind of spitballing, but I'm just wondering if we could do like a, like a, you know, mailer where we have like the insert and we can talk about X, you know, if you opt out, X amount, we're saving the, the town $20,000, $30,000. Do you want to be a part of trying to help the town save some money, so?
I don't think people will look at them, which is why it's stupid to have a mail.
But, I'm just trying to think on the fly.
Yeah, yeah. You're right. It just, it kind of goes back to the point of why are we sending them?
So, if we're done talking about that, then we can move on to the capital improvement plan discussion?
Yeah, just on the budget, just to wrap it up here. So, you guys can decide if you want to hear from departments directly or if you want to write in questions and I bring back answers at the next meeting. Like at some point, you, you just have to figure out if you want more information or if you're going to come April 7th and be ready to discuss and vote. And so, yeah, at some point, I'll just need some guidance from you if you want more from me or the departments.
Yeah, so my, my initial thoughts on that are I think that especially this year because of the shortfall that we started off with, I think that we've had more discussion throughout this whole process. So, at least I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of the budget this year and I don't think that we need to have the departments coming to our next meeting or you know, have a separate meeting for that. I think last year we did do this where we sent you questions and you were able to get answers and then we will discuss it at the next meeting. So, if anything, I think that that would be the approach we should take this year, but, you know, happy to hear from other folks as well. All right, let's do that. All right, thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then, so then to go, to move on to the capital improvement plan?
Do you want me to put this up on the screen? Might be helpful.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so, this, we've, we've done things a little differently this year with capital and it, it ties hand in hand to the budget as it normally does, but this year more than usual. I'm just trying to figure out which makes more sense to bring up for you. So, let me just touch on a couple of things. Attached to the agenda is the capital planning committee's recommendation. So, they were supposed to present to you at the last meeting and we didn't get that. I did reach out after the meeting and they did send me something, so that is linked here. And then we also have the memo from the permanent building committee as select board member Gold mentioned during select board comments. They did draft a memo to the select board encouraging you to consider the police department building needs if there were additional funds available or as you looked at the capital budget. And so why this is coming up to you, never mind the fact that you need to actually adopt a capital plan, is that the budget for FY '26 is balanced essentially by a reduction in the capital plan. And the reduction is mainly attributed to the funding mechanism for the chiller at Blueberry Elementary. And so instead of an outright purchase, as I originally proposed in my capital plan that I submitted in December, we have decided that the best approach to take would be to bond for that chiller and use the debt service to pay, I'm sorry, use the capital plan to pay the debt service of about $216,000 for the next five years out of the capital plan. We're still able to tackle the same number of projects that I had proposed in December, but just a different funding mechanism and thereby reducing the overall capital budget to help us balance the budget overall. So, I will bring up here what that plan looks like.
And while she's bringing that up, can somebody just refresh my memory? When we requested that roadway work be bonded, did we not also suggest that the bond payments for that come from the capital plan?
Yes, and it is.
So, in here, it's that supplemental road is the bond payment and not just more work on the roads?
Um.
I, I just.
Yeah, sorry.
That's what it is, that's fine. I, it just said road repaired, road paving. Oh, no, it does say bonds, okay. All right.
Sorry, it looks like I attached the five-year plan twice, so let me just get the, the other plan that. So, I'm reading the same thing you are.
It's, it's called revised budget.
Yep. Yeah, so if you look under line 50, the road paving, that $350,000 covers the bond, the debt service on the five-point, almost $2 million bond.
Yeah, that was my question because I, because I thought previously that number was like four, wasn't it, like 400,000?
Um, yes, so we would try to fund as much as possible in the capital plan because that's what we were doing with chapter 90. But, so we're able to, I was able to reduce the capital allocation for roads to just cover the debt service. We could, we could, if, I mean, it, it eventually becomes your capital plan. If you wanted to move some, some of this around, you could. If you wanted to go up to 400, you then just have to cut 50,000 from somewhere else to make it all balance. All that would do is, is escalate your debt service payment.
So, that $350,000, is that a 15-year bond then for the road, roads?
Um, I don't know what you, well, you, we just, did we, oh, bids, bids are due Wednesday.
I'm not in yet.
Yeah, so as soon as the bids come in and we evaluate them, then what will happen is Ian will start all the work with bond counsel to figure out what's the best plan to put forward.
Right, but if we're borrowing $5.2 million and paying back $350,000 in a year.
Yes, he did some projections last year to get this.
The bond's going to outlast the roads.
Um, no, no. Ian, when you did these projections, when Sean presented this plan in, I feel like it was October, you, you had something then?
I'm pulling it up. At least, I'm pulling it, but I believe this is.
I think it was also in the town meeting article warrant.
Yes.
The, the explanation talked about it as well.
So, in October, I requested bond counsel to run a schedule for paving bond at $5.1 million for 15 years. This would give us an annual principal of about $350,000 and then total principal of interest of about $532,000.
So, the total interest is 350, principal and interest is 532,000. Where's the other $172,000 coming?
Sorry, I, I was not, I was pulling this up, but what, what, so it was?
The question is, the total principal and interest is 532,000 on a 15-year bond for the road paving. And Mark is asking where the additional 150,000 comes from to service the debt. If the capital plan asks for 350,000 from the general fund to fund the road paving, I believe the answer would be that it would come from the general fund for the additional 150,000.
Yeah, but, I mean, the good thing is at your next meeting, we'll know what the bids came in at. So, if it's 5.1, then we'll refresh all these numbers and have a comprehensive answer for you. If it's 4.75, then none of what we're projecting right now even matters because it would, we would only borrow what the bid came in for.
Right, I understand that. I, I just thought that the bond was going to be paid for out of the capital plan. And what you're saying is only the bond interest is paid for out of the capital, not the capital plan, out of the capital fund, that 2% of our, 2-point-something percent of our.
This was a sample run back in October.
No, no, I hear, I hear you, Ian. I'm just saying that, that, you know, are we, you know, it, it just says that, that what Lynn's got up there, that $350,000 under general fund road paving, should that not be 532,000?
Right, and, and I think.
I mean, it will be what it'll be, is what your point is.
And so, so a lot of this is, it's our best guess, right? So, when the capital plan gets prepared, it's the best guess at that point. We haven't gone out to bid yet. So, this 350 is just a placeholder. Next year, it might need to be 475 or something to, to start making up for that difference that you're speaking about. There's just, there's a lot of unknowns as we. There's just, there's a lot of unknowns as we put this together.
Again, I, you know, again, my concern is that a 15-year bond for road repairs seems to be, to be a very long period of time. I thought we were in the five to 10-year range for, name a road in this town that's lasted 15 years. I mean, we're gonna be paying this bond when the roads are still, you know, we're still paying the bond when the roads need to be redone again.
So we can look at a five or 10-year?
Well, it's gonna be far, that one's more expensive, obviously.
Yep, and then what are we cutting? So it's, it's...
I, I understand that. I'm just saying philosophically, I think the Select Board needs to get on board with, are we gonna bond for 15 years? Are we gonna bond for something less than 15 years for roads? That's all. And I, and I'm not suggesting, other than my opinion is, 15 years seems like a long time for roads.
Yeah, I think when we talked about this, you know, when we had this discussion, I think the number we were saying we'd put towards this was 750, somewhere around that. So that would be, you know, less than 15-year, uh...
If I may, um, I can read from the article. "The town annually funds roadway with mass dot Chapter 90 funds approximately $480,000 a year and capital improvement funds ranging from $340,000 to $740,000 a year."
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I think at this point, with the bids coming, are due on Wednesday, let's get that and then we can have this discussion at our next meeting.
Well, I, I guess beneath the question we ought to ask or, you know, advise is, you know, will the bond, will Ian be talking to Bond Counsel about a 15-year bond or something shorter than, you know, the, I'm, I'm not arguing with him, I, I understand. The bids are gonna come in what the bids come in at, and we're gonna try to bond all these projects. You know, hopefully, we can get them all done and then some. And we'll find out what, what the cost is. The question is, the cost has two factors to it. You know, how much, well, three, how much you borrow, what the interest rate is, and the length of the, and the term of the, of the borrowing, right? And we can, we're gonna find out how much we're gonna borrow when the bids come in. The interest rate, our Bond Counsel's gonna tell us what they get for bids. But we can adjust the, the term, that's all.
Yeah, and, and Ian, can you bring back different options?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, this was, I was...
The only, the only other thing that I think of that we would have to do is amend Article 7 of the special town meeting where we appropriate the sum of 5.1 million to pay for these costs, so...
We can, we can spend, hopefully, it'll be, we'll amend downward to pay for the cost.
Right, right.
But that article says nothing about the term of the bond or even the interest rates of the bond, which we can control. So I, you know, I mean, if we, if we have to amend it, hopefully, you know, I'm expecting to amend that downward because the, but who knows? That was the plan, right? That we're gonna get favorable bids because we, the timing to go out, the number we want, right? I don't think that...
Yeah, and Ian didn't read the whole warrant article, I pulled it up. It's silent as to the funding sources or where we're applying it. And to remember, if I can remember correctly, we can, we can't pay principal out of Chapter 90 and interest out of here, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Chapter 90, you gotta spend on...
Yep.
I mean, we have, we have plenty of roads that are, have been around for 15 years. I don't know if they, or should be. Um, but yeah, I, I, generally, I agree, but, and that, you know, that, we did this to do a big splash to make, to do a lot of paving and we still gotta pay for it. So, uh, yeah, I, I agree with you, Mark. Um, 15, we gotta look at our options, see where we're coming in at, and cross our fingers that, um, it looks favorable for us.
Yeah, as long as the door's still open, we, we ought to look at it. But, and you're right, it all starts with what are the, what are the bids? We know the roads we want to pave, what are the bids?
Okay, anything else? So, I mean, I think also, at our next meeting, we'll be able to talk about this further, okay? Um, okay.
One, one thing actually, because when I was looking through this, so, um, obviously, we've had a lot of incidents at, at, um, at our parks, our pools. Um, so one of the things I, I keep seeing that pops up years out is, is cameras. So that's something, again, I hear a lot about and, you know, it, it makes the newspapers and I just wonder, like, can we maybe take a look at funding, uh, security cameras at our parks, um, this, this go-around rather than waiting a couple of years? Because it seems like every few months, there's another incident. And I'm not suggesting that a camera's automatically gonna solve the problem, but I think it might help deter, um, some issues that we're seeing, so...
Yeah, cameras are in the works at Greenwood and Bliss Pool. Um, it's been delayed due to turnover and IT, um, project starts and then stops and starts and stops, so that, that is in the works.
And then, like Wolf Swamp as well, or...
That one, we, we've been entertaining getting some quotes for, um, but not entirely sure it's, it's a worthwhile investment.
Hey, Wolf Swamp Fields?
Oh, yeah, Wolf Swamp Fields, sorry, yeah.
So we don't have a total cost on that yet, um, and the type of situations that have been occurring there, the cameras wouldn't capture enough to, um, potentially help, to be worth the investment. So we're, we'll continue to see what it comes in at, just, we'd put one on the concession stand, but, um, we would not blanket the entire facility.
And this is me not knowing the cost of, of what the, how much it costs anyways. I'm just, I just know we keep seeing incidents and trying to deter folks, that's all.
Dan, assume the camera costs five bucks and the wiring costs $5,000, $50,000, sorry.
Anyways, that, I just wanted to make a comment on that.
I, go ahead, Josh.
Just, uh, was it everyone's reading of the Capital Planning Committee's memo to use the stabilization fund, uh, interest, if we have it next year, to do the police station funding? And I, I remember, because it said that we sent you a 2022 memo asking for this to be done. And I do remember, we keep pushing it off because it's a lot of money. But I, I went around it today to look at it and it, I, I see what they're saying. It's like, it looks like my house where we had a lot of delayed maintenance and it's just gonna keep adding up. Um, but my reading was they're, they're looking at that next year, not saying it's priority next year. It's, uh, and if that, I, I think that that is a good idea for us.
Josh, you're talking about capital planning letter or this building committee letter?
I'm, I'm sorry, the, uh, what am I talking about? I'm talking about the building committee.
Right, right. I, I thought it was this year. Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure what the letter said because I just had trouble interpreting it. But at the meeting, they were talking about making changes to do it sooner rather than later.
Okay. But it, it said if, it said something along the lines of, "If you vote to use stabilization interest, we recommend using it for the police facade", which to me would be next year.
And, and I think, you know, yeah, this has been talked about for a few years now and I think one piece that we were waiting on was the building, um, study that's being done and how that might affect, you know, anything here.
So, um, you can, I would need to know at that, at that meeting, April 7th, you would need to be prepared, um, if you wanted to use that stabilization interest, and you wanted this to go to the annual town meeting, I would need to know then. Because the warrant goes to the printer that week. Um, if you wanna wait and do it in the fall, we can do that. You can spend some more time with it. I just want you to know that the...
Do we have an idea on how much that would be, the interest?
It's $440,000.
So in theory, that could be the Police Department and get us towards funding our bond, depending on what it comes in at, for our roads.
Yeah, so basically, we have, we're saying, well, we're, we're have the interest on the operational stabilization fund, we, that's not part of this. You haven't allocated to anything.
Nope.
So, I mean, I think there's consensus that we should use it for capital projects. I have no objection to doing that, essentially, so, for what it's worth.
So if it seems like that's a consensus, we can work up a draft article. When you do your deep dive into the warrant next meeting, it would be on there, at least for you to consider.
Yeah, so I, that money, 300 grand is a lot. And if, if there's a greater chunk, I'd rather see it go towards the roads. If there's some lesser part of 300 grand we could spend, I guess. But I, I know that...
Is there a percentage you can put to that, Josh, like 50/50 or...
Depends on the bond bid comes in then.
Well, I mean, wouldn't we rely on Lynn and the Cap, and the Permanent Building Committee and the Capital Planning Committee, if we just tell, tell, like, what are your priorities as you've already done, essentially? Here's the interest on the operational stabilization fund. What would you suggest we use it for? Clearly, they want, they, I mean, I don't know how much exactly it would cost to do the Police Department, but that could certainly be part of it.
I mean, that, Andrew, I, I answer your question by saying, take the capital planning, the plan that Lynn has proposed to us and add the amount of interest from the stabilization fund, which is about $440,000.
And reduce the, and regarding the chiller?
No, and say, and what, and what else would you do, recognizing that the 350 number may have to be adjusted up or down?
Yeah.
Okay? And then is there money still left over for an, another project? And the recommendation of those building committee is that it be the police building facade or police facility facade. But you may say your recommendation is something else.
Right, after you get more information, especially.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, and that, that, that's a better answer to your question about percentage.
Okay.
I, I think we should fund the paving bond first and then leftover, we can see where we're sitting, which I guess isn't much of a change from now, but we're gonna have a bigger chunk.
Right, I, I guess the, the question is, Lynn, if we add $440,000 from the, of interest from the stabilization fund to the capital plan, are we gonna pull operating revenue of $440,000 out of the capital plan to go into the, into the operating budget? Because the intent, or are we just gonna be able to expand the capital plan? And I thought the intent was expand the capital expenditure recommendations of the town by that amount of money.
Right, because the budget that I presented to you...
Uses no...
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think, um, yeah, I think I agree with what was said, that maybe some options for priorities that we could fund at our next meeting would be great to have. Okay, uh, anything else on this?
Yeah, but beneath that, just comment that it needs to be, I won't say discardable, but it needs to be variable because there's no guarantee we're gonna get a two-thirds vote at the town to approve the expenditure of interest from the stabilization fund. In other words, it needs to be...
You mean, it needs to be optional?
Optional, whatever the number, name, the word is.
Or it has to be...
Can't be an essential, like, we can't bank on something we really need to happen.
Right, I agree.
Which is what the policy is too, which is adopted tonight, basically, a non-recurring, right?
No, he's saying, we may wanna do something, but if it doesn't get two-thirds vote, it's gonna fail. So we can't, we can't do something that we absolutely need to happen.
Yeah.
As, if we really need something to happen, it'll be in the budget, obviously.
Yeah, 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 I, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I, I don't think I explained that well, but, yeah. That's, that's right. Okay, anything else? All right, um, thank you, Lynn.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're, we will move into the annual town meeting warrant review. So there's a draft that was provided. There are, you know, a good number of placeholders that's still in the works. So I think, at least for tonight, you know, hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review the draft warrant tonight. I think instead of going line by line and, you know, through this whole thing, if there's anything that's jumped out to you guys that you think that, um, would be good for us, you know, that needs to be edited or discussed, we can talk about that. Or also Lynn, if there's anything that you wanna draw our attention to, um, as well, uh, for a discussion.
Sure. Uh, the only thing I would draw your attention to is that, uh, I did make edits to it today. A new version was, um, uploaded this afternoon. It tells you at the top when it was last updated, so, um, there's some additional ones in there and, um, some things have been reorganized just a little bit, so it flows like prior years. Um, two ones that were added were, uh, from what you may have looked at over the weekend, were, um, uh, an article to authorize the Select Board to serve as the MLP Board and, um, to, uh, an article to rescind a vote, a prior vote from 1988 to, uh, regarding preliminary elections. I'm still working on the exact language on both of those. A lot of this is still a work in progress, as you've seen. Uh, but just so you know, those topics have been added.
Quick question, there are five spaces for citizens petitions. Are there actually five citizens petitions or...
There are.
Okay, thanks. Uh, do the, the, do they always go towards the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Generally, um, you guys can reorder it any way you want.
Yeah, we moved up the, uh, the middle school rule last year.
Yeah, I think a lot of the stuff on here have been, you know, items we've discussed throughout the year that have come up. And then also some, you know, exciting things that I, I think we're, we're good to see on here finally. I, I know that one thing, I, I think, you know, there are two firefighter, uh, or fire department-related articles with the overtime that's needed and also the, um, the vehicles and the engine that you touched on earlier. And especially, I think, the, the overtime budget one, the explanation on there is, is important for, I think, for people to see about what's been going on. Um, anything else that, you know, from the review of these articles that you all saw that needed an edit or needed discussion?
What is the, rescind the adoption of Chapter 5 Act in 1988?
Um, so in 1988, the town adopted, uh, a special act to require, um, nonpartisan preliminary elections 28 days from the, um, annual town election. Luckily, we don't have a lot of preliminaries here, and so this has not been one that has been closely tracked. Uh, this is a rarity in the state. We are one of the only communities that have this special legislation. We've been encouraged both by Elections Division and Town Council to get rid of it. And this year alone, we're seeing why we need to get rid of it. The turnaround time from a preliminary, um, to our, uh, annual election is incredibly short. It's why we had to move our annual election, um, date because our preliminary at that time was lining up with town meeting. Um, and also, the charter requires, um, the timeline to withdraw your name, um, from, sorry, I just got distracted. Uh, the charter requires, um, a certain amount of time to be able to withdraw your name from consideration. That date is, um, like, four days before the preliminary election. And so it's causing a problem for us to actually be able to have ballots ready. And so this is, it, there's, every time we turn around, there's an issue with this special legislation. 28 days is very small, the state is 35. But that extra seven days makes a big difference.
So does this put us to the state default? So we would still need preliminary elections if we have more than two candidates for every slot? Or does it, or do we go back to not having preliminary elections?
I need to research that a little bit more. I'm not entirely sure which one it is. I just know it's better than what we have right now.
Because judging by how many people pull papers for Select Board, we're gonna have a preliminary.
If everyone turns them in, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
How many people have turned them in, by the way, do we know?
Uh, as of, what is it, last week, it was one.
Just me, I guess?
I, I don't know, just, I just know one person.
Yeah, when we had the discussion earlier, I thought it was just about the length and not necessarily doing away with a preliminary.
I remember talking about this, but I remember...
Yeah, so this special legislation calls out the 28 days.
Yeah.
The, the, the state provision on preliminaries is 35, uh, no sooner than 35, I think. Ours is so specific, it's 28 days exact, it's not, no sooner than 28, no, less than 28. And it, we have really backed ourselves into a corner with this.
So we can't get rid of the preliminary because of the state?
Because we adopted it locally.
If we, can it, I'm sorry, is it possible to eliminate preliminary elections or not?
I'm gonna research that still.
Okay.
Based on Josh's question, I don't know what happens when we get rid of this, if we default to the state, which is the 35 days, or if we just don't have them in general. I'm gonna, I don't wanna speak out of, out of confirmation yet.
Yeah, if there's a way to not have them, that would...
I would, I find them rather, I think they're onerous. I think they are expensive.
Yes.
So I think that it's like, yeah, I don't, I, if there was a way to include elimination of it and put it before the town, I, I'd be in favor of that.
Yep. I will have more info the next time I come back to you.
Okay, anything else on the warrant? All right. We can then move on to the zoning bylaws. So these are just bylaws that need to be referred over to the planning board. This is just procedural.
Correct, yes. And you've already seen, you've at least seen the ADU one when Corinne brought this to you a while ago. Planning board has been tweaking it and now has a final version. That's what you see tonight, but it now needs to formally be referred back to them to start the clock on their public hearings.
I move that we refer section 315, 17B accessory dwelling units to the planning board for review and public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And then Lynn, do you want to talk about the LCTV's satellite studio update?
Sorry, I need you to do the...
Oh, sorry.
I move that we refer section 315, 15 flood pain zone to the planning board for hearing and review.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay, great. And now the...
Yes.
LCTV's satellite studio update.
So with the move to Greenwood Center, and we have a large conference room at the end of the hall, it presented the opportunity to potentially add a satellite studio for LCTV. This would allow them to, to have access, to have facilities to record and transmit from both this A15, but also the Greenwood Conference Room. There's been more and more requests upon them to record and air boarding committee meetings. And with just one room equipped to do that, it's been a jockeying of meeting space, you know, whose meeting is more important, that type of thing. And so just, it presented the opportunity to better equip us to, to have more meetings filmed. And so LCTV has been doing their due diligence to figure out what it would cost to do that. And they have presented this to you guys, just to make sure it's actually something you're interested in having them pursue. This is not a cost to the town. LCTV would be taking on this through their capital funds. It does not deplete their capital funds. They do have, they would still have funding left over, but wanted, they asked that I bring this in front of you to just get a consensus and confirmation that this is a direction you'd want them to go.
Okay, great. And then the total we're looking at for this is $46,889?
Yeah, something like that. Let me... It's whatever that quote was that I attached. I'm pulling it up now.
Great, yeah, I mean, I... I, I think that this sounds like a good idea. I think that we have this other great space. We have this opportunity to have technology there. And LCTV, you know, they're, they've, they've done this work of looking for quotes and also are saying that they're going to fund it. And if there's buy-in on their end, I think that that's, that's great. And I think that this is something that I would like for them to pursue.
Well said. Where exactly would it be, the studio? I mean, at Greenwood, but where?
Yeah.
In the building, I'm trying to...
Where, it's not going to be as robust as what they have here. And so they're gonna have a small footprint. We're still yet to decide exactly what they need, but we want to accommodate them if they can make this happen.
And they're wiring up the room that's got the big seal in the back?
Yes.
Is there other, is there other wiring or other needs that, that should be done there while this project's going on? And obviously, it's not coming from them, but I'm just trying to see if, if that makes sense.
No, we've pretty much done everything we need to do there for what we use it for right now.
Excellent.
So Lynn, if you recall, on the contract that we approved last year, do they have to run this capital expenditures by us? And we're supposed to review the budget. But is this a requirement?
That is a good question. I would need to familiarize myself with that operating agreement to know for sure.
I'm familiar with it, but I don't remember off the top of my head. But I, I, I think that if they have the funds to do it, and this overall seems fairly reasonable to me, the more opportunity we have to tape and broadcast and have people be able to watch these meetings, I think is good. So I, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so you said that we may have to approve this?
No, I, well, I, I guess we could vote just in case. I, I don't remember. We're supposed to have, not approval of the budget, I don't remember exactly what it says. We're supposed to see it, but it's not really our budget, right Lynn?
Right, yeah, you're supposed to have an, at least an annual presentation, just to, here's what's happening, here's what's going on.
Because it's our residents' funds, but it's not, it's not our budget. This isn't our money. We couldn't choose, I don't even know if we can say yes or no. I, I just don't remember. But we may want to vote on it, just to give clear, to give cover.
Yeah, okay. Mark?
I think the, it seems to me the intent of this is, this room's not adequate for true public hearing or a public meeting. And, you know, so the question is, is what room is the most appropriate to have other meetings in that you'd want to have televised? And in the past, we, I know we've gone to the business technology center for a couple of meetings and other things. And, and, you know, I have no problem with the back room of Greenwood Center. But if there's other rooms in town that are higher priority for public meetings, I think we should at least suggest those if they're, if they're available. I don't know what they are or where they are, but if that's not why we're suggesting going to the, I'll call the old cafeteria, I guess, is the area, right, in Greenwood Center, then, you know, where, where would we want to see a televised public hearing?
Are you saying, weighing the benefit of a larger space versus the benefit of a second location for whatever, like, you know, that might be beneficial?
I'm saying the benefit of a second location beside here.
Right.
That, that would make sense to have, you know, LCTV put their resources in to televise from.
I, I think that that room is much more akin to where, when I appear in other towns, that room is much more akin to what I'm, what I see, the ways it's laid, laid out. I think for, where, any, anything beyond that, I don't see where, we would, we wouldn't want to permanently wire another place, I think. If we did have something like that, I think the business center or high school gym, if it's a really big one, I think that that, that they seem to have the apparatus, so, to do that. So I, I think the only place that makes sense to permanently wire at this expense would be there.
That's fine, Josh. I just didn't want us to say, oh, yeah, let's go there and find out the better places.
Yeah.
You know, one of the middle schools or an elementary.
The old police room where you had your meetings.
Whatever, wherever it might be. I mean, you know, maybe Josh should include in the new middle schools, some, someplace for LCTV to translate.
Like the block plan.
Don't add another factor.
I pulled up the agreement and the, we got periodic reporting is the idea of annually showing year expenditures and budget prepared by an independent CPA. That, that is really to present to us. And we review it, but I, I believe that's it.
Okay. All right. So we should give them some kind of direction here on this?
Yeah, even though we're not approving, I think we should probably vote to say, yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
That's the place.
Trying to see what, how Tracy worded it at her email.
So Lynn, there would be like a studio, like they have a studio here, and then the other room, like that lunch hall or that other space that I don't really know what we want to call it, but...
So the idea is that the Greenwood room at the end of the hall, the, the former lunchroom is the large meeting space, whether they have a little hub in that room, or whether they're in the kitchen space, or if they're in the post, the, not post, the mailroom. We're still working all of that out.
Gotcha.
It's not gonna be as big as what they have here.
Right.
So even if they do end up sitting in the same meeting room, you know, in a, in a little workstation, it can still happen.
Yeah, just think of all of our, the seniors that are at the adult center. And I think it'd be just a, it's a good location. I mean, just other opportunities for folks that are already in that space at the adult center. They, if there's an event going on there, it's accessible.
Oh, to, you mean to come to the Greenwood?
Yeah, to go to, to go to Greenwood from the adult center. And there might be opportunities with LCTV that they're gonna present there. And I think that's a good thing for our older population.
Yeah. I mean, some background on exactly why I suggested this site is that it then gives us a facility at a school and a facility at a town building. And the hub of municipal operations are now at Greenwood. And it just provides a nice synergy between staff working in their spaces all day and then being able to go across the hall or down the hall for meeting space. And with the middle school building committee meeting now on Wednesday nights and on LCTV, it created multiple conflicts with planning board, who is also using LCTV. And so that just spurred the need to do this sooner than later. I think more people want to be able to see what's going on inside their government. And this gives us that great opportunity. And actually, the Greenwood site is just, every single day has proved to be one of the best things we've done. There's adequate parking, one level, everyone's under the same roof, plenty of bathrooms, and it's all right there. And I, in the next few weeks, we'll be able to open for nighttime meetings.
You gotta miss community house a little.
Just the dance.
Just the basement.
Okay. So I move that the, that the select board approves LCTV's spending towards wiring up and setting up a satellite studio at Greenwood.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. And then we've got a one-day liquor license application.
I move we approve St. Mary's Academy for, for one-day liquor license for an event on April 5th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and then correspondence, any comments? Okay.
Oh, yeah, just, just commend Erica on keeping up on that. And that's a good way of capturing some money that is owed to the town.
Great. And I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.